Is audio on? Good evening, everybody. For the record, it is Thursday, January 10th, 2019. It's 5:15 PM and the city council is out of executive session. I'll call the regular meeting of the council to order. I don't know who gets to do the first pledge. Maybe I'll do it.
There you go.
All right. I'll lead us in the pledge in our new office building today. So, stand up.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proof you're being recorded.
Instant feedback.
So, bear with us a little bit as we're working on all the technical sort of issues as we have moved into a new building. And this is our first meeting in the new council chambers. So, yesterday morning, this place did not look like this. So, just bear with us as we sort of work our way through it. Roll call this evening. All seven council members are here this evening. First item on our agenda are the consent items, which includes the agenda vouchers and minutes from the previous meeting and ratification of the mayor's signature on a lease.
Your honor, I make a motion to approve the agenda, the vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meetings, and also for the mayor's signature, authorize the mayor's signature on a lease amendment number one with American Behavioral Health Solutions, Inc., for Parkside.
Second. Motion by council member Huffaker, second by council member Poyer, to adopt this evening's consent items, including the agenda vouchers and minutes from the previous meetings, and ratifying the mayor's signature on lease number one with American Behavioral Health Solutions, Inc., for Parkside. Any discussions? Hearing none.
Excuse me. Is the, I think we have here on the purchase and sale agreement, do we need to add that to the agenda?
That was for which one?
Extension of the...
Oh, the extension? Yeah, we should add that. I'm sorry. Yeah. Would you, there was a, if you want to add approving the extension with Widener Development for the purchase of the Kitata Street property?
Can we take it to the top?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So, I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings, and to ratify the mayor's signature on lease amendment number one with American Behavioral Health Solutions, Inc., for Parkside, and to authorize the extension of the purchase and sale agreement for the Mission Kitata parking lot.
Second. All right. Motion by council member Huffaker, second by council member Poyer, to approve the consent items, putting the agenda vouchers and minutes from the previous meetings, ratify the mayor's signature on lease number one with American Behavioral Health Solutions, Inc., for Parkside, and approving the extension with Widener Development Homes with regards to a purchase and sale agreement with our Kitata Street property. Discussion. Thanks, council member Bailey. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda would be citizen comment. This would be if any member of the audience would like to address the council on something that's not on today's agenda. We ask that you come up, give us your name and address for the record, and give me about three minutes. See no takers. We will move on to our presentations. We have two this evening. The first regarding Wenatchee School Choice Week proclamation. Councilmember Bailey, do you have that?
I have that, your honor.
You.
Proclamation, Wenatchee School Choice Week, whereas all children in Wenatchee should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas Wenatchee recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Wenatchee to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Wenatchee, and whereas Wenatchee is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home, and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas Wenatchee has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now, therefore, I, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, do hereby recognize January 20th through 26th, 2019, as Wenatchee School Choice Week, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens and witness whereof I have caused the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 10th day of January 2019. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Bailey. I don't know if anyone's here to get that, but I'll make sure it gets in, gets to Tammy then.
Okay.
Thank you. And then we're going to have a presentation regarding our housing code update. I'm not sure, Glenn, who's doing that? Steve Maher, what's going on?
Yes, so you have several presentations tonight. The Community Development Department's been working on an overall update of the housing code. It actually is implementing some of what is coming out of the Our Valley, Our Future Housing work, and so we have Steve Maher here tonight to give you a review of that, and then Glenn will come up and do the overview of the housing code, and we'll get more next week, so.
Okay. Perfect. There we go.
Greetings, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for having me here tonight. Steve King's joining me because he's got something to add at the end of the presentation that has to do with the white paper that's part of the housing report. Before we get going, I wanted to thank Jim Bailey and Lyle Markhart especially. They served on various committees and showed up at some of our meetings. Also, we had at least two planning commission members, and I may miss some folks, but Ronnie Sampson and Ace Ballinger were part of our committees that worked on the Housing Solutions Group. Also, Steve King, Allison, Glenn DeFreeze. Hopefully, I'm not missing anybody, but really, really great support and help from the City of Wenatchee in what we put out or set out to do. So, this was, well, before I get there, so we're going to, tonight, we're going to talk about that. All of this came from the Our Valley, Our Future Housing Game Changer. That's in the action plan. It's one of the seven game changers. And then all of this came from what residents told us back in 2015, 16, when we did our outreach work, which led to the game changer. We'll go over some of the key sections in the report, recommendations. Then we're going to put a spotlight on two of the recommendations that deal with diverse housing types, which was a big thing in the report. Steve will touch upon some of the white paper findings, and then there hopefully will be a little time for Q and As if you have them. So, again, the game changer had several steps. It was very much incremental. 2017, in May, we formed the Housing Ambassadors Group, which eventually morphed into the Housing Solutions Group. As you can see, that was the group that spent about a year, met 31 times, put in more than 900 hours of time into this project. There was a lot of, lot of time and a lot of work that went into this. Back in, again, 2015, 16, we did extensive community outreach that led to the action plan and the seven game changers. We had more than 3,000 residents complete a pretty extensive survey. We took that information, and that's what led to the game changers and the, and the action items. And when it came to housing, folks told us quite a bit. They found, they told us that housing options were very limited. In the survey, we found that many, many people were spending more than 40% of their household income on housing, which obviously has a impact in a lot of different ways in the economy, including for retail, retail stores. About, I think it was about 45% of the respondents said they had considered relocating to another city within the past year because of the housing availability and housing affordability issues here. That's a huge red flag, obviously. They also, and this was an interesting one, it was about 80% of the residents said they did not believe the housing market left to its own devices would correct the problem. I think if we had asked this question five years ago or 10 years ago, it would not bend in that way, and I think it's an indication of the frustration and angst that had been building up here for, for several years. They also strongly favor more diverse housing types. As you know, Wenatchee, as a lot of communities are around the country, has basically more or less two types, and that's single-family, the traditional single-family home, and, you know, the apartment complex. And so, to get what we want to get, they obviously saw the need for diverse housing types. And then finally, as you all are aware, I think, because it had a factor in your sewer extension out to Sunny Slope, folks said they were willing to pay for more infrastructure if it, if it leads to more housing, and it was by about a two-to-one margin that they said that, and that was, I think, a surprise for a lot of folks. Issues unique to our region, you know, we obviously got steep hillsides, geographic bowl, in Shalane County, about 82% of the land is owned by public agencies. We also have things that impact our housing market. You know, we have traditionally a low wage structure. We are also a quality-of-life draw, so we're constantly seeing more people move here for all the great stuff we do have. And then also, another factor when it comes to housing, you know, we have one housing market, we have one community, but we've got multiple jurisdictions who are all kind of, you know, working on this on their own in a way. So, the key selection, I don't know how many of you have a copy of the report in front of you.
If anybody wants a copy, we can...
But I'm going to go through this really quickly. Housing Solution Group members, I want to call attention, there was about 40 folks who served on this for a year. That was a great cross-section of the community, and also from the industry. We had, we had developers, builders, realtors, architects, low-income housing experts. It was totally across the board, and, and it reflected, I think, in the, the final product. We also had folks from not only Wenatchee and East Wenatchee, but Malaga, Antiat, Rock Island, Shalane, Cashmere, and Leavenworth participated on this group. So, again, it was a really great regional effort. There's an intro executive summary that kind of sets up things. This group, also the Housing Solutions Group, decided to focus on middle-market housing for two reasons. One, there's a huge, huge need there. You know, middle-market housing is typically what you would equate to also workforce housing. It's also, it's called a bunch of different things, but that's one reason. So, we have a big need for that. The Housing Solutions Group also felt they could more or less kill two birds with one stone. If we could get more market, middle-market housing here, it would also free up housing for the low-income folks, because there's been a lot of down renting and down buying going on here for several years now, and basically people, you know, grabbing whatever is available, even though they can afford probably way more than that. We've got the survey results and the white paper summaries in this report. We also, and I'll, I'll show you some examples in a moment, had a architect here in town basically do some bird's-eye views of what Wenatchee could look like, or probably will look like in 25 years, based on population growth and current zoning, and that's very interesting when you look at that. You'll see kind of some of the things we're up against. Again, then we have 18 recommendations, and finally, an appendix that includes the entire white paper. So, here's the renderings I was telling you about. This is obviously, you know, a satellite view, I guess, but you can see the blue, the light blue is projected, single-family housing in, over the next 25 years. The red that you see a lot of in Wenatchee along the waterfront and in, you know, downtown, sort of the urban core, that's projected to be three-to-nine-story buildings. The purple out by Old Station is, on the Douglas County side, is mixed-use residential, commercial office. And then, again, you'll see some blue, but you'll see in the, and I'll show you another one here. This gives you an idea here. So, this is looking north. Wenatchee on the left, East Wenatchee on the right, Birch Mountain in the distance. Not only does it reflect what I just said a moment ago, but you can see Wenatchee, how Wenatchee is up against the hillside. You know, there just isn't much room for Wenatchee to grow anymore, given its current configuration. So, that's very revealing. This is looking east. So, again, this is like, I think, from, I don't know if that's Saddle Rock, somewhere up there, looking east, and I'll show you another view in a second. There is a lot of land out by the airport. Rock Island and Malaga all have potential for a lot of single-family. You can see a little bit better here. You can see the airport kind of in the, kind of the center above that big blue section. So, again, you know, we live in a geographic bowl. There's not a lot of land that's available. Steep hillsides create issues, et cetera. So, the key recommendations, you know, I'll go through these fairly quickly because I do want to focus on the diverse housing type one, but encourage support, construction of diverse housing types, add more infrastructure. That was what the Housing Solutions Group determined was, that was a big thing. The Wenatchee side is way better off than the Douglas County side in terms of infrastructure right now. They also want to see code made uniform as much as possible across all agencies. Lot of the developers and builders who build here, they, when they go to each agency, whether it's Shalane County or Douglas County, or City of Wenatchee, or City of East Wenatchee, run into different regulations and code, which complicates things for them. There was also a, a recommendation to appoint a liaison to help developers and builders navigate the permitting process, and so that's an interesting one. Try to find ways to get more housing built in outlying communities. Places like Antiat and Rock Island in particular are totally primed for more housing. Antiat has about 600 acres at, according to the mayor. If somebody wanted to come and put in a bunch of housing, they could start probably within a month or so, and it's all serviced. So, we've got 600 acres in, in Antiat, that's all serviced with utilities. Rock Island, I think, has about 200 acres that you could build on right away. Finally, a couple other recommendations, and these are not all of them. Again, we have 18 in the, in the report, but incentivize landowners to develop property. In this case, the Housing Solutions Group was talking about land that's been sitting either vacant or, you know, potentially developable for several years now, and there doesn't seem to be much movement on it. And then finally, consider regional land use planning. It's one community, one economy, and the feeling is it's time to, at least, consider So, diverse housing types, I think most of you are familiar with those. If you're not, you know, includes things like townhouses, cottage housing, ADUs, bungalows, you know, lofts, AD, I mean, all that kind of stuff is considered diverse housing. It also fits that description, again, of being middle-market housing. There's a perception that some of these housing types are not very attractive, but in, in reality, they are. And again, these are very attractive to middle-income earners, these kind of housing types. So, there's two tasks or recommendations in the report that deal with these diverse housing types, and the first one, if you go through the report, we identified the issue and then followed that with the recommendation. So, this first one is interesting because we looked at trends of millennials and active seniors and kind of, you know, what they're looking for, and it turns out that, you know, many of the kind of housing options they want fit that diverse housing type area. A lot of single, or a lot of seniors are, you know, downsizing. They, they also are active, so they want to be close to things. There's been a trend for seniors to move, in many cases, into urban areas, downtown areas, that have those kind of amenities. And so, the recommendation then was to first educate. There's a lot of education that we feel like is needed here, because when you mention diverse housing types to folks, sometimes you get this sort of glassy look in their eyes. They don't know what you're talking about, or they have maybe a misperception of what they're like. So, we feel like there's a great need to educate folks here, and also because we don't have many examples of that. There's a few. If you go out to School Chuck Road and you're heading to Mission Ridge, there's cottage housing right past the store there to the left. Some interesting townhomes have been built recently along Western, along the canal at, near Washington Street. So, there's some examples out there, but there's not a lot, and so there's a need to do that, and particularly also with the financial institutions, we felt. And then another big recommendation that was part of this was encourage agencies like your own to hire employees or consultants with, with expertise, so that the impact from this is more systemic and, you know, again, jurisdiction by jurisdiction. And then again, infrastructure is a big key to this one. Another task, and this was a little bit similar to the first one, again, this is, the feeling, again, gets back to the housing types and maybe opposition from neighborhood groups, again, not understanding what these things are, how, how good they look, and why they're needed today, because there's, again, folks want these. And it gets, again, gets into the education aspect, and then use lying, essentially presentations like we're doing tonight, but also some town halls and workshops, et cetera. I might add that the Housing Solutions Group through Our Valley, Our Future is making more presentations like this to other policymakers in the two-county area. We're lining those up now. We've also made two presentations to service clubs so far, and about a month ago, I went down and presented to the Association of Washington Business. They had a summit down in Longview, and there was a lot of interest in what we're doing. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve King.
So, in 2016, we, the City of Wenatchee commissioned a study on housing to figure out what was going on, which was great basic base data for the work of the Our Valley, Our Future effort. And in that, one of the most shocking tables in that whole report is these cost discrepancies between other eastern Washington communities. So, Brian Vincent with Pacific Appraisal and I set out to try to figure out why the cost differences were so different, because automatically, as long as I can remember, everybody blames it all on land availability and the cost of land in this area. And so, we went through a rigorous study to figure out what we could about costs, and it turns out it is not all land. Land is part of it, but it is not all land. So, I'll just go through this real, real quickly. So, we do have the highest land cost, but it's obviously not the whole story. So, this shows the land value ratios, basically the land value ratio at the total cost of the home. And so, you can see that we're in the 19% range, whereas Yakima is 10 and, and so on and so forth. But then when you pull the land out of the equation and you look at home values and home costs and just exclude land completely, you'll see that Wenatchee is still considerably higher than those, than those other market areas. And so, that was, that started the, the hard part. How do you determine what those other costs were? And so, we looked at permitting. We wanted to make sure it was not permitting, and so this includes all connection fees and building permit costs for approximately a 2,000-square-foot home. We looked at all these agencies, and our permitting costs are in the valley are, are right in line with the other eastern Washington communities. There's one outlier that's very low, and that's Canowick, $3,500 to, for all connection fees and building permit. Kind of interesting, but the rest of, you know, we're in the 10 to, $10,000 to $15,000 range for permitting costs. So, not a huge difference there. Whoops. I missed. Okay. So, I want to go back to this slide. One of the, the things that we did find is we priced out materials. Really hard to get contractor markup and labor. We don't have access to concrete data on that, but we were able to price out some of the materials, and materials is significantly higher here, whether it's concrete, framing packages. And so, we asked the question, why, why wouldn't somebody just have a truck come in from another area and still pay these, these high prices? And it really comes down to the convenience level of building, and it basically, if I need, I need my trust package tomorrow, it's a matter of calling the supplier that I work with, if I'm a builder, to get it here. If you're in a community like Tri-Cities where they're building large subdivisions, 100 of homes at a time, they organize their construction differently, and they'll bring in materials in mass quantities and stockpile them on the site. And so, there's some different relationships, just because our market size isn't as big, and we don't have the large parcel sizes that you might find in other communities. So, our subdivision and building projects are relatively small. Maybe our housing numbers are similar to Ellensburg, but that happens in a different way. For example, Ellensburg might build a whole, whole bunch of houses in one time versus we're cutting 30, 40 houses here, here or there at a time, and that, and the builders are building smaller quantities of homes than what you might see in comparable markets. So, that's, that's a big, big issue. And so, when we conclude and just look at, you know, land costs are not the whole reason, permit fees are generally within the range, land availability is a significant challenge in the sense that our tracts of land are small. So, those are the areas you saw out towards, in East, East Wenatchee, Douglas County, those are the only opportunities for larger tracts of land. Let's see. Labor shortage, and so in visiting with the builders, labor shortage is a real challenge. And I think we've seen material prices and labor impacts just in our own city work, especially in concrete work. We use that as an example. They're seeing that same, same impact in building a house. And then we talked about the material prices. Did find a, this quote was provided to me, it was a quote out of an economic study for Shalane County in 1976, and it's interesting that it says that the vacancy rates were less than 1% and that we need to take action. I think this region will always have a housing issue. It's just the way it is. It's our geographic constraints. Maybe as we grow a little bit more and you get bigger, bigger developments happening, even the Riverside Nine is a bigger development that we haven't had in the past. Some of that might change a little bit, but I'm, I'm pretty sure we're, we're, in 20 or 30 more years, the same discussion will be happening. So, the, the call to action is, is still present and will probably be present.
So, any recommendations specifically for the city based on what you've seen, Steve or Steve, in terms of we ought to do these two things or three things? I mean, expanded sewer, working on our housing types, I mean, is there anything else that we shouldn't be doing?
You know, one of the things I didn't mention was the Housing Solutions Group projects most of the growth to occur on the east side of the river in the future. Obviously, there, as you saw from some of those drawings, that's where the land is available.
So, you're suggesting we annex East Wenatchee?
I'm not saying that.
Okay.
But the City of Wenatchee, I think, is for sure going to go up. It's going to have to. I would say some of the recommendations you guys are already doing, like you mentioned infrastructure, so I would say just continue doing that. I think the diverse housing type is a, is a big one. You've got opportunity for infill here, some possibilities with that.
I would say that it's what you've been saying, Mayor, is the, the easy stuff is done on this side of the river, and so you'll see that our permit fees tend to be a little bit lower and whatnot. I think that's been an effort of the council for, you know, a long time to try to stay competitive with other, across the river and out up the valley. So, working on programs like what Glenn's going to present, those sort of incentives or efforts to get development and different housing, like what Steve is talking about in our city, it's going to take a little bit more work than, than if you just had open land.
You know, and I think another thing the City of Wenatchee could do would be to encourage everybody to continue to collaborate. I think that's really important for what we have. It's one community. Whether that ultimately leads to the regional land use planning, I don't know, but things like, you know, just the, making the code uniform as much as possible across all those jurisdictions, that's something the City of Wenatchee could, I think, encourage the other entities to, to do. So, I think that collaboration thing is really important. You know, we've got a finite number of, you know, we, we're in a geographic bowl. We have a finite amount of land. You know, we're all one. Let's figure this out.
I was, I was, one person shared with me who had done a lot of development work on the west side, that you're very, said you're very fortunate to have a large-scale development of apartments going on. Now, when we did the study in 2016, right, we only had Riverside Nine going, and now we have pushing four or 500 units, and he said that is a good thing you need to keep going down that road if you ever want to try to stay, stay up with this at all.
And today, obviously, vacancy rates are up a little bit. I'm, what do we, what's the market today?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be interesting to see when all these units come online, how the market reacts. Still hearing concerns, costs, you know, you know, we're looking at costs. So, what'll be interesting to do is watch, watch the, the data to see if some of that down renting problem eases up, and then, you know, the other thing the housing study highlighted was the housing mismatch. It's purely a demographic thing. We're a single-family residential community, and we have aging folks, so housing sizes are decreasing. So, creative ways to live-in units, ADU, mother-in-law units, those sort of things. Some of our codes allow some of that, but expanding that, I think you'll hear, is... Some of our codes allow some of that, but expanding that, I think you'll hear, is, is a way to make better use of those larger homes that are being underutilized today.
You know, the other thing I would add is when we did our survey, you know, we had a large number of people tell us and about 700 folks wrote their own personal housing story. I read through all 700. It took me a while, but it was pretty amazing because it really puts a human face to everything. And many of those stories told about people who were, including people in the middle income bracket who were doubling up. They had relatives move in, other family members, friends. There's a lot of stories like that there. And so I think that is something that is not really well-known. It's sort of under the surface. It's not apparent to the general public. And so my own sense is that even though we're going to get more houses built here and more apartments, you've got all this built up compression. And I think the vacancy rate may not go up that much because of that.
All right. Any questions for Steve and Steve before we hear from Glenn?
Just one question. Do we allow tiny houses in Wenatchee?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay.
Is that the right answer?
They're not allowed by state law?
Well, wait a minute. There's no such thing as tiny houses. There's houses of different sizes.
The houses that are built on site.
Well, that's, that's, those are not houses. Those are recreational vehicles.
Yeah. So, but tiny built houses then would be allowed?
Yeah, there's no, the, the state removed from the building code, minimum housing sizes.
Okay.
So it's up to local jurisdictions to decide whether or not they want to follow along with that.
Okay.
But just remember, they're houses.
Right, on a foundation.
They're not tiny houses, they're houses. So energy code, building code.
Yeah.
As opposed to green tagged, is it green or is it gold, tagged recreational vehicles, which are on wheels?
Right.
Park models.
Yeah. Anything else? Thanks, gentlemen. Glenn, you got a few things for us before we? Okay. And Stephen? Hey, Stephen.
Presentation opportunity. Tim's getting that up for me. Thanks for the opportunity to talk a little bit about this for you as a bit of a refresher. Sorry. All right. All right. Some of this information you've heard before, but it's been a while. Last year, we started our housing code update process, which was directed by the 2017 update of our comprehensive plan and then also the good work of our, our valley process. And we wanted to revisit sort of the foundation because next week, our consultant's going to have an opportunity to speak before you to give an update of where we're at in the process, some observations, and then ask some things from you, which I'll, I'll talk a little bit about. But, so beginning with last year, we asked for a variety of consultants to come and provide proposals. I provided a copy of that request for proposals in the mail this week, an email rather. And I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at it. If you have a chance before next week, it'd be great. In that, it really outlines what we're asking for in this process and it has copies of the relevant policies. So highly recommend you take a look at that before next week. And let's see, it's going to let me. On, one of the things that John Owen with Makers is going to do next week is also talk about how we can effectively work with you and the planning commission to not just hand you a product, but integrate you into the process to get your feedback on how you can take a look at the drafts and give us some direction prior to going through a public review process. So John Owen is going to have some questions along that regard. And I'll talk a little bit about the process to date. Let's see here, next. But just looking again at our 2007 Wenatchee urban area plan, plan and some of these things Steve and Steve talked about. But again, we have a really low vacancy rate. That might have shifted a little bit. I don't have updated data, but again, looking at a 20-year process, just to keep up with growth, not make progress on our vacancy rates, which are, were about 0.5%, we need 250 new units a year just to match with growth. So it will be interesting over time to monitor that, but we have a lot of work to do to get to a decent vacancy rate when we have a 0.5% vacancy rate at the time of the last study and we were deficient in the valley, 1,601 units, which is the right reason we're working on what we are. And then Steve talked a little bit about demographics and it's interesting looking at that. As a valley, our age groups between zero and 39 years of age are actually decreasing and 40-year-olds and up are increasing. And the number of single, one to two-person households make up 60% of the households in the city with only about 20%, 1% of the community having, being a couple with one or more children. When you take a look at that, the needs for those one or two-person households, not everyone wants a single-family home or can afford one. And yet, 2/3 of the existing residential units in our valley are single-family homes. And as was discussed in our valley process and noted in our comprehensive plan, there's a real desire in the community to diversify the supply and diversity of housing, which is why we're doing what we're doing. And just the huge benefit for employee retention, to attract employees, housing affordability, decreasing homelessness, the biggest link to and reason for homelessness has been found to be the availability of affordable housing. And, and we are the second highest per capita density of homelessness in the state in Wenatchee. And then this, all the more reason to have a good focused effort on this to maintain the quality of life that we enjoy here. And just, just briefly, again, the policies are attached to what was sent out, but our goal is to implement the policy direction of the plan through this housing code update to develop design standards that evaluate appropriate locations for diverse housing types within neighborhoods, utilizing blended densities and evaluating and recognizing the differences between neighborhoods. The review should look at the character form and intensity of development and type of place as well as the mix of uses in the area. And lastly, hire a consultant firm that specializes in urban design to evaluate changes to city design, development and development standards, providing clear and explicit architectural, site and landscape design standards, which can provide greater certainty and quality assurance for business owners, neighborhoods and developers. I just picked sort of the three themes in those policies, but if you get a chance to take a look at the, the whole set of policies that we've attached, the request for proposals can give a good foundation for next week. And as was discussed, we're in the prior, prior presentation, we're looking at more than just multifamily, we're looking at missing middle. If you go through the older neighborhoods, there are a lot of rich examples of stacked duplexes, four units that blend into the neighborhoods. And that's the whole concept. We're not meeting our targets for density that we've already adopted and our standards and our process are getting in the way of implementing that, which is why we're doing what we're doing. But we want to respect the neighborhoods as we do so. So we're looking at greater flexibility for dimensional adjustments, achieving our densities, increasing housing types, working on our permit processes, simplifying them, making many things outright with performance standards, but doing so by having compatibility with neighborhoods, adequate parking, providing for privacy and livability in our neighborhoods and having, maintaining character of our valley that we want to maintain. And that's a local choice on what that means and which is why we're having this public process. Schedule-wise, what have we done to date? We've had first a really good extensive regulatory audit, looking at our code, looking for changes and what opportunities can be done. And then we had a survey in the valley as far as visual preferencing, what people like to see and looking at these, increasing diversity of housing types in a, in a public workshop. We have a great stakeholder group. I'll mention some of the names in that stakeholder group that's been working with us as we go through this process. And then the next phase, we looked further at a second public open house and workshop and stakeholder group at specific zoning changes. And we had a development review panel of local developers and also the housing authority that gave some feedback as well. So we've gotten some really good public feedback in that process and many planning commissioners and council members had a chance to attend that. We've got one more open house, public workshop that will be in March that will make sure everyone's aware of. The press has been a great partner in this and getting the word out and we've had some good participation and we'll continue to coordinate with them as well. But one of the things that, again, that John Owen with Makers will be asking you next week is once we get that draft and get through that public workshop process, we want to be able to effectively coordinate with the planning commission and the council on working through the draft before we go through a public review process or formal adoption. And he'll be looking for some ideas with you on that next week. So again, encourage you to participate in the workshop coming up in March. We'll be getting feedback from the stakeholder group. And just wanted to note, we've had with these stakeholders, we've gotten more input, some really rich input on not just housing, but also the other components that Steve and Steve spoke to on infrastructure and those types of issues. And we're going to ask them to continue to work with us as a stakeholder group to give us some good feedback on infrastructure issues for further opportunities that the city can look at for potential changes. And just briefly, our stakeholder group members, I think we have 15, Alicia McCray, Cherry Valdez, Mark Hansen, Mike Noid, Bob Kope, John McQuig, Al Stonis, Emelka Fermcheck, Mark Neal, Dave Dubroff, Mark Kulis, we, council member representation, Cliff Burdick, Corey Ray, Scott Griffith, our planning commission chair, and Steve Bishop. We had a couple others who haven't been able to make it, but we've got a great stakeholder group to help you get a good recommendation and we've gotten some really good public feedback in this process. Again, wanted to just refresh and to remember why.
Because next week, we're having a joint meeting with the planning commission?
Correct. We'd like to do a joint meeting and, and one concept maybe with that meeting is maybe once we get a draft, having a full-blown workshop on a planning commission night with the council to attend. So it's something to think about. Just really want to engage you in a discussion, taking a look at the draft components and get your feedback. You know, if there's some aha things or reactions, things we can work on before we set it up for review, that'd be great.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Any questions for, we're going to see them next week as I go through it in more in-depth. Perfect. All right. Thanks, Glenn. Thanks, Stephen. All right. So we do have a public hearing item tonight, so let's go ahead and take care of that before we take a little break. So, public hearing item number A, which is regarding cryptocurrency mining and data center code revision. So for public hearing, we'll hear from staff and then we'll ask questions of staff and then we'll turn it over to the members of the audience that wish to address the city council on that issue. Then we'll turn it back to the council for any action they may be willing to take. So public hearing item is now open and Stephen and Matt?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We've got a planning commission recommendation and Matt's going to go through kind of the, the process that the planning commission went through and their components of their recommendation.
Back in winter, 2017, 2018, Schleen County Public Utility District approached the city about concerns about life safety concerns related to unauthorized cryptocurrency mining. They're looking to partner with us, find a solution. Basically, they're unauthorized operations and the nature of the electricity use causes fire hazards and they'd had numerous situations that were substantial threats to the safety of the community. And so approached us about, about working together on a, on a solution. February 22nd of 2018, we, the, the council passed ordinance 201804, which is an interim zoning control addressing cryptocurrency mining. And that had a particular framing, it still allowed a, a framework for permitting it in commercial areas and prohibited it from residential. In compliance with state law as for interim controls and moratoriums, on March 22nd, 2018, there was a public hearing and the council passed resolution 201813, adopting findings of fact and a work plan for the coming year. And I'll go through kind of what we've done to carry out that work plan. Spring and early, oops, I said summary. It meant summer, spring and early summer 2018, council or the, the planning staff continued working on, researching the, the topic and communicated with the Schleen County Public Utility District, learning their perspective on the topic and figuring out a best, best path forward. July 18th, 2018, there's the first planning commission workshop on the topic. Staff presented, discussed it with the, the planning commission and came up with a list of questions that they had, that the planning commission had for the PUD. In August, at the August workshop, Andy Wendell from the Schleen County PUD came and presented and answered their questions. They were, learned a lot from that, that presentation, but they also wanted to see the other side of the, of this, the story. And so asked to hear from some cryptocurrency miners. So in the, at the September workshop, Becky Peters and Nick Martini were in attendance and they, Becky Peters is a, runs a residential operation that she worked with the PUD and established it under, under their framework, their high-density load framework. Nick Martini's an entrepreneur hoping to get a, kind of in on the ground floor on, on an emerging industry. So they provided their perspectives to the planning commission and so the planning commission kind of got both sides of the story. And October, staff brought kind of first draft of an updated set of codes that could be adopted. It was discussed and the planning commission had a few requests, broader definition of cryptocurrency mining, ensuring that it withstands the test of time as emerging technology evolves and also to address noise standards. On November 15th, there was actually a council workshop that provided some, some update for this group. November, planning commission workshop. Let's see, we had brought forward some noise level criteria. Basically, it's a state area, the Washington Administrative Code, that we could just simply adopt a framework, having, so we could have specific decibel levels for, for operations so that doesn't affect, so there's a specific limit for how it affects surrounding properties. November 30th, we provided a notice of code changes in compliance of state law. Finally, in December 11th, the, a public hearing with planning commission. The planning commission was able to settle on a, on a definition, they adopted what had been suggested. And staff also provided a proposal to include a limit for how much you could use in a, in a residential home. Basically, and I'll get a little bit later, but basically that you could do up to half of the, of the house conceivably committed to cryptocurrency mining and we're proposing something that would limit that based on power usage and/or area, floor area. So PC recommended approval. What they recommended is reflected in the draft ordinance that you find in the packet. And here we are in January 10th, 2019, at the city council hearing. And then just so you know, the interim control expires on February 22nd, 2019. So I was going to kind of run through some features of the code that's, that's proposed in ordinance 201902, just kind of give you an overview, like kind of talk about what's changed from the interim control. One, basically a cryptocurrency, a prospective cryptocurrency miner would, when they find a location, they would apply for a business license. And when that comes to community development, we would process it as a type two application. And what that means is basically we would notify, we'd post a site with our typical land use signs and we'd send out notices. land use signs, and we would send out notices to 350 feet around the property. So this has not changed from the interim control that was adopted. Also, they would have to receive written approval from the Shalane County PUD and Washington State Labor and Industries, basically, ensuring that the electrical systems are adequate both before and after the electrical meter. This also has not changed from the interim control. One thing that has changed, we added data centers. Basically, we don't currently have a definition or any land use category for data centers. So we thought, this is probably a good time to just add it, something we know, someone might be interested in doing in the city. So, decided to add a definition, add a row on the land use table, just get it included. So we have something to apply if somebody ever applies it for a data center. Cryptocurrency mining has largely remained the same from under the interim control. However, the definition was slightly modified, basically, looking at the way the technology may evolve. It's just a little broader, but otherwise, mostly unchanged. Probably the most significant change is that this proposed code, the code that the planning commission recommended for approval, does allow cryptocurrency mining in residential areas.
It does allow it?
It does, yes. As a necessary use. The commercial and industrial, very similar framework as from under interim control. Made sure that it would not be located in storefronts. So, allowing it in the central business district, in the housing interim overlay, and all along North and South Wenatchee Avenue. You wouldn't be able to, it wouldn't be in, it could be behind, could be above, below, but not in the storefront. And we also adopted, included some blank wall standards. So if someone's building a new structure, basically, it's using a standard that's used in the central business district for blank walls. And we're just going to apply it to a building for this use in any commercial area. So, it's within 50 feet of the right of way. There's some standards, just make it look nice, so you don't just have a big blank wall. Also includes some standard in Washington Administrative Code 17360, which basically has some specific decibel levels, a specific framework that we were able to adopt rather than creating our own.
Is that like the noise from a rock and roll band, or just some computer humming? Help me with the difference between the noises. Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be the cooling fans.
Well, I know what they are. I'm just trying to--
But the levels, the state law allows are actually probably far more excessive than most people understand them. They're far louder.
Okay.
Yeah, I just didn't know what--
So, what the mayor's asking for is equate it to something.
Yeah, I need to know what that--
Sure, sure. It's loud.
I'm assuming it's loud.
It's very loud. Limitations are very loud.
55 decibels is--
Very loud.
Industrial cooling. Yeah, this is not a--
Sure.
Right, no, no, okay. Yeah, so the issue for me is if we're going to allow in a residential area at the decibels is what I would hear at the rock and roll. You know, that's a bit of concern, yeah. I think Councilmember Kulis sort of answered my question.
Oh, okay.
Possible. Go ahead, Matt.
Okay. Basically, what I learned on, from my understanding of this framework, we could go through our own process. The planning commission asked for specific decibel levels, and probably for good reason. I learned that if we wanted to have our own, you could go through that, I think, basically it wouldn't be valid until, you can choose other decibel levels. I think it wouldn't be valid until approved by the Department of Ecology. And so, not something that we could necessarily fit within this process. Maybe it's something for another topic of discussion for the city in the future. That's, that was it for the features of the proposed regulations. Like I said before, ordinance 201902 is, would adopt the recommendations of the planning commission on this topic.
So, let's see. Questions? Obviously, there was some discussion about the residential component, which Councilmember Harold asked, and the noise. Any other questions you got for the gentlemen while we have them here?
Related to noise, who in the city monitors noise complaints and responds to them?
Law enforcement, I believe.
Code enforcement, and then law enforcement.
So, it's nine o'clock at night? Who's going to show up?
Law enforcement.
The city council would be the police department.
Yeah. It's the same thing with barking dogs, right? They go knock on the door and--
So, can they--
Do they have the meters?
Yeah. And can they keep the noise level at a level that is, I'm not just, number one, I don't think, feel that it should be in residential areas, period. But number two, you have a business downtown, it's going to be a discomfort for those people working next door to you if the noise level is too high. So, is there a way that they can keep that noise level down and still keep the cooling going and everything they need?
Yeah, they could certainly block the units, you know, with some dampening equipment or shields of some kind to help stop the distance that the noise travels. It would kind of like the, on highways, they put up the sound walls to stop or keep the noise from traveling so far. So there's ways that that could be done.
That could be done.
And shouldn't those ways be put into the ordinance to ensure that that's going to happen? Because we could sit here and talk about it all we want, and oh, yeah--
I don't think you want to specify the method necessarily, but there needs to be some kind of rule that says, X distance from your business, the decibel level cannot exceed--
Exactly.
X.
Before we take a public comment, is our technology enough that you could pull up the zoning map of the city and show us where the, generally, the areas where cryptocurrency mining and data centers could potentially locate in the city?
I can get that pulled up quickly.
While Matt's loading this up, under the interim ordinance, cryptocurrency was restricted to commercial and industrial. So that's North Wenatchee Avenue, Shalane, Mission, out the highway--
But not in the central business district?
Was not included in the central business district in the interim ordinance, that's correct. So, in the revision or the ordinance proposed to you by the planning commission, it would be in all zoning districts with restrictions in our water, in our mixed use.
Is there a reason why the planning commission decided to include residential areas? I mean, what was the discussion? Was anyone concerned at all of cryptocurrency businesses going into the residential?
There's a lot of conversation with the planning commission. And, you know, what they looked at is a couple of different things. One, the PUD, you know, came to us with a lot of conversation about the consumption of electricity. And so that was one thing that the planning commission did discuss, you know, what are, you know, similar type uses that someone could do in their, in their house or in their shop, right? If someone had a hobby of welding or doing, you know, anything that required a lot of, you know, electrical equipment, that uses electricity. So that was one thing that the planning commission keyed in on why they thought it was appropriate, because there are other uses that consume power. You know, they also looked at trying to differentiate between what is a business and what is someone's investment or a hobby. So that was, again, another conversation that the planning commission wanted to allow residents of the city of Wenatchee is the ability to invest in cryptocurrency, to mine cryptocurrency, just as we would, you know, day trading or other type investments that would use a computer interface to do that. So I think those are really some of the key areas that the planning commission used in their discussion of allowing it in residential zoning districts, allowing residents to use their properties for their benefit and gain.
From a practical standpoint, again, the standard residential load wouldn't handle significant number of the Bitcoin machines anyhow, and the PUD would have to provide it, safety issue. So, some of that stuff just sort of isn't going to happen just because of that. So it really gets down to the land use issue for us, which is, if you had two, is that okay? Well, if you have 10, is that okay? I mean, that's sort of the, right?
So with the, when we look at the zoning map, the zoning districts here, obviously, it looks, most of the city gets put into either both or one. So waterfront mixed use won't, wouldn't allow the cryptocurrency mining, but would allow data centers, for example. With the inclusion of the residential areas, that puts it throughout everywhere. Where typically do we find these overlay zones where these are allowed, the HEO, the CSO, and the IO? Where do we typically find those in the city? Which ones are those?
The HEO, that's our, the downtown core. So, it's this, kind of has the green perimeter and the slash. So, I think the northern, northern boundary is the second, and southern boundary is Kitata's.
And that's, and this proposal is different than our interim.
Correct. I believe so, yes.
So we're introducing more area that we previously precluded. How about the CSO?
That's the Columbia Street overlay, so that's immediately adjacent to the downtown warehousing--
Yeah, the industrial--
Yep.
--character.
And I think some of the, at least some of the things I heard, Councilmember Kulis was, yeah, I get it, not on the, on the commercial main floor, but can I do something in my basement? Is, I think, some of the discussion I heard from some of the downtown business owners that we sort of talked about, well, if you got the right power and it's not affecting the neighbors, you know, that was sort of the question. I don't know whether it's right or wrong, it was just that was some of the discussion.
I just don't understand the reasoning of why it would not be okay for the downtown, but okay for the residential. I mean, why, and I, I mean--
It's permitted in the downtown core, just not on the main floor.
But why? I mean, but yet, it's okay for residential with no limit.
Right.
It makes no sense to me.
Me either.
So, is there, could we move maybe to public comment?
Yeah. So you got your questions answered before we hear from the public? All right. So we'll turn it over to any member of the public that wished to address the city council on the cryptocurrency public hearing item. Ask you to come up, give us your name and address for the record. And we'll give you three minutes, four minutes, two, four, six, eight minutes. Anybody interested in talking to the council regarding cryptocurrency? All right. What do you guys want to do?
That was easy. So, I'll address just the residential part, and others may want to address the commercial part. I could not approve this ordinance with the components allowing cryptocurrency mining as accessory uses in residential areas. I do not believe that the noise standards really protect you from the 24-hour noise levels that can be produced. I realize that there may be methods of regulating that. I do like the, I am pointing out the comment that staff made in their report, that is, the primary purpose and intent of residential districts are for housing and not for commercial uses. And there are, it's very difficult to, sometimes to monitor what's an accessory use. You have an existing house, and you have someone living in there, and the house might be filled with electronic server components producing or withdrawing, drawing a lot of energy, producing a lot of heat and having a lot of ventilation. I don't think that we are equipped to monitor that. I don't think it's fair to our residents to have that going on as well. Now, that's, that said, like you said, I cannot vote for this ordinance that includes accessory uses in residential districts. And as far as I'm concerned, that's the end of the issue would be tonight. If at some point the planning commission wanted to seriously look at some of the guidelines that staff had mentioned, that we see in other communities, such as a maximum number of devices, a maximum amount of power drawn, those other things that would help the hobbyist, I'm willing to listen to that, but not this, not this, not the blanket accessory use in residential areas. I can't support this ordinance that way.
I echo your concerns.
I have to agree with Councilmember Kulis, too. And I'd also like to see something that restricts the noise level lower than what the state standards are.
Yeah, I just, I agree. I think we have an obligation to protect the integrity of residential area where people live, not where they work. The decibel levels here, I mean, in the residential areas, it's 55 decibels. In the industrial commercial, it's 70. So you're getting on the, you know, quite a bit higher level of the downtown. So if you're going to listen to it downtown, you're going to hear that, 70 decibels you're going to hear. Not much way you can, in my opinion, can mask that. I had really a couple of concerns, I think, in terms of this. One, just from the public safety standpoint, just alone, I think we increase risk by allowing it. The second area is just simply enforcement. I have a real, a real problem, I guess, in terms of turning these kinds of businesses or making these kinds of businesses operational, and that we have to somehow figure out how to manage that. And I just have a, you know, it's going to be part of code enforcement, okay? It's dog barking, you know, too much garbage in the backyard approach. And so, it's not fair to paint everybody with the same brush. There's probably, there are people that would be responsible, but we've already had examples of a lot of bad actors in this thing. And so, when we go out there to do that, I mean, we have to get a business license. Well, what if they don't? They just set up shop and crank up.
But that exists now.
That exists now.
Yeah. That isn't going to change. All we're trying to do is maybe encourage somebody who wants to honestly do it a way to do it.
Yeah, I would agree with that. The other, the recommended standards from staff, in terms of monitoring the amount of electricity in the square footage, I think the requirements, you know, the legal requirements of business license, you know, LNI Electrical gets involved, you know, all those kinds of, I think that probably, at least to me, satisfies, what's been presented satisfies that part of it. The other side of it is that if you have a business, you're going to operate a business in your, in a residential area, there are limits on the amount of space that can be, can be used. Currently, with that left out of there, and this was what we found a few years ago with some folks moving in, rent a house, fill it up with, with stuff, and off you go. I mean, again, that part that you read, Councilmember Kulis, about, you know, what the purpose of a residential area is, it's not for businesses. We have business areas where people operate businesses, okay? That's fine. They can set up shop down there, and I'm okay with that. But I just feel that there's just, this just opens up some doors that I just really don't think we want to go down. And to me, it's protecting the integrity of our residential areas and people that have to put up with this stuff.
So, we don't adopt the ordinance, does the moratorium continue on? Is there a length of time when the moratorium has to end? Do we have to extend the moratorium? What's, here comes people, here comes people smarter than me.
That's a good question. And yeah, so the interim ordinance does expire on February 22nd of this year. And so--
So we have time to do another mor--
We could extend, we could look at the possibility of extending that. We certainly could prepare an alternate ordinance for you based off of the comments that you've said tonight. We can go back and--
Well, if we're meeting with the planning commission next week on housing, can we talk about cryptocurrency with them as well?
That'd be an excellent idea.
I don't know if that's, I'm just trying to--
I wouldn't have any problem with it.
I don't mind the discussion, but I'm not going to be moved on the residential issue.
Right, that's all right. Ultimately, it's our decision.
I'm not moving off of that. I'm not moving off of that. I, I have personal knowledge of homes that were acquired and have been almost completely filled with data processing equipment and the issues that they're causing their neighbors. And I'm not saying they're around here necessarily. It does not work without, without some, I don't, like I said, I don't mind the hobbyist. Get some control on that, but...
And I think you got the support of the council. The issue is how do you put that into a Planning Commission recommendation that works?
I guess what I'm saying on, again, with this ordinance, I'm not speaking to those other components. I believe Councilmember Bailey made some very good comments about what would affect the commercial areas. I'm not saying that I would oppose this ordinance today if it did not have those residential components in there. And, and like I said, as far as I'm concerned, that topic's done. Until six, eight, 12 months from now, the Planning Commission might consider the hobby limitations. I'm not going to work on brokering that deal in the next month. It, it takes way much more research and thought than rushing through this.
Did you want to pull the residential components? It's a very simple action to simply pull the accessory use off the chapter 10-10.
That is, I'm just not sure if the other council members are comfortable with the other components.
That's one point, but I, I think the noise issue, even in the business district, needs to be addressed because, you know...
I agree.
Would you want to go shopping in an area where you're listening to a high-powered fan run all the time? And, and just the people who have to work in those businesses and listen to it next door.
Not only that, what if you have 10 of these data centers all, you know, next to each other? You'd have a whole block where you go through almost with earplugs.
And this is why I think the noise component needs to be addressed.
The trucks downtown.
Maximum levels are allowed at a certain distance or something, you know.
So procedurally, are, are we at a point where we, one, we could just take action to deny this ordinance or not, not approve it, or it has to be something more than dying for a lack of a motion with some instruction? Or is it, then part of that instruction would be that we want to, at the, at the first council meeting in February, if not the meeting on the 28th, do an extension to the interim? That would be fair. The other option is to table this. Well, the idea would be that another ordinance might come back. So I'm not sure tabling this indefinitely is, I don't know, but...
I don't think we need a motion. I just think maybe just instruction to bring it back.
Well, it's, we have to dispose of it somehow, seeing whether it's to table it for future consideration with, with instruction or whether it's to...
Motion to deny it.
Deny it.
Deny it as written.
The Planning Commission would, it would be beneficial for the Planning Commission to have some specific correction if you do want that to work out.
I think we could just take it and...
And is that something that we could do at next week's meeting?
You could remand it.
Put it in the motion to, to deny it.
To deny it, but...
And remand it back to the Planning Commission.
So making notes here, you know, other than my rhetoric or my, my residential thing, noise issues in general, is that kind of what?
In all, in all districts, yeah.
Noise issues also adequate.
I think we have numbers on neighboring properties.
Yeah.
Neighboring property, yeah.
So, and Danielle can keep me straight on this one. I, I would make a motion that the council not accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission and not adopt ordinance number 2019-02, and including in that, that, let's see, for reasons that the primary purpose and intent of residential districts is for housing and not for commercial uses, and that there may be noise impacts that are yet to be determined on neighboring properties that deserve further analysis. And third, that the council will discuss this with the Planning Commission to provide additional direction to bring this back up. And fourth, that staff prepare an extension to the interim ordinance to be delivered to us for consideration either at the last meeting of this month or the first meeting of, first regular meeting of February.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Koulas, second by Councilmember Sparza, to reject ordinance number 2019-02 specifically with related to the housing element, noise element. What other element did you have?
Yeah, and, and to continue the moratorium.
And, yeah, and to authorize staff to bring a continuation of the moratorium either at the next meeting in January, the first meeting in February, and sort of remand this back to the Planning Commission to meet with the council to discuss. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So let's take a little five-minute break. High school students, if you're here, will sign your little paper so you don't have to stay forever, and we'll start with action items in about five minutes.
You, you just, you can't get people to turn out unless they, you know, it's a really direct, natural impact.
Matt?
A certain, a certain farm plant comes to mind where they didn't take them to consideration or their property and affect their neighbors. And that turned into a real mess after that. You don't want to go there.
I just can't accept cryptocurrency.
I'm going to leave a note, Steve. I don't know how many exceptions you guys have already had on this.
The one I'm thinking of is in Withrow, and it's like two houses from Gordon Edgar's house. And it's, and it's illegal, and it's driving them nuts.
Oh, really?
And why, why isn't somebody doing something about it?
Well, we're, we're, we're working on that. Due process, see, this is the problem is, is that you don't just go out, we're not law enforcement. You don't go out and just shut someone down. They have due process until you write letters and this and that. And, and the guy moves up from Florida and he finds these depressed homes and he starts buying them, and he gets a bunch of guys that are grown and smoking marijuana to go in and maintain the computer equipment. And they have huge, they'll take, they'll take the garage door out, and it's just a wall of fans blowing out.
You want Schlam? Schlam voted not.
Oh, it's...
Testing one, two.
Oh.
When I think of our, we just had this...
Oh, oh.
That's my initial rattle.
Thank you.
How long do I wait?
It can start anytime.
Okay. All right. For the record, we are back in regular session. It is 6:36 PM. We have a number of action items today. Who's gonna do the one for Edgar regarding WSU?
I am, but did we add Steve's item to the front of the agenda or?
We actually already approved it.
Oh, you already did?
Yes, we just did it. Well, the consent items included the approval of the extension with Wyner.
Got it, okay, all right.
Wasn't just to put it on the agenda, it was to approve it.
We were getting acclimated over there and we missed that, so glad to have that clarification. Alson Williams, Executive Services Director, handling item B for you this evening, the interagency agreement for the community survey with WSU. Captain Reinfield is out this evening and Steve Crown is out of the area. This is a simple extension of the time they need to finish up the survey. There's no dollar amount here, it's just a couple of month extension. And so we are asking for your approval to authorize the mayor to sign the amendment, extending the time period for the survey work.
Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion for the city council to provide authorization for the mayor to sign the attachment amendment to the agreement with Washington State University.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Harold, to authorize the mayor to sign the attachment amendment to the agreement with Washington State University. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. So with respect to the next item, I just, for the record, want to, obviously this has to do with the mayor's salary. Just for the record, when this was first brought up, it was in a work session, it was a work session that I was not at. And then it was some discussion at a finance committee meeting, I recused myself at that point. And so then, for this purposes, I'm gonna turn it over to the mayor, Pro Tem, and let her run the meeting, and I'll go sit in the audience for a little bit until we get to item D, so. That's for you. And I know that Kerry has a presentation or something.
Thank you, Kerry.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. Kerry Page, Director of Human Resources. In late 2018, as part of the regular schedule of consideration of updates to the mayor and council salaries, I performed a comparative analysis to similar cities and provided an overview of salary and benefit information to both the finance committee as well as the city council, and that was in October work session of which the mayor, Pro Tem, at that point in time was presiding. The last adjustment to the mayor's salary was in 2007, so it's definitely due for an update or at least a look. In 2019, I'm sorry, the 2019 budget approved by city council does include the salary that ordinance 2019-01 would implement. So I'm here to ask the city council to approve ordinance 2019-01 establishing compensation for the mayor, amending ordinance 2007-38.
So a point of clarification, there hasn't been an increase in salary per se, but there have been regular COLAs.
Of course, yes, yes, thank you for that.
And those are, the mayor doesn't, the council approves the budget, so he's not voting on those, but the mayor's salary is one that can be authorized with the COLA in it, yes.
Kerry, what were some of the instructions, the first time you presented it, we didn't, I forget exactly, but we came back and said, well, we want a little more information about this city or this city.
Right.
Can you?
Yeah, so one of the things that we wanted to look at were benefits and whether or not they were comparable. And so I pulled the benefit information, I went straight to the human resources department of the cities that were found to be comparable and found that the benefits did match our benefits, actually quite similar, our benefits all the way to the retirement packages that we offer with the deferred compensation. So another thing that we looked at, or that I looked at, I'd like to be a wee, but, so another thing that I looked at were cost of living and what would the mayor's salary here with this adjustment be compared to the comparable cities? And found that it would be comparable. You know, I looked at Wenatchee, formerly his salary was averaging about $84,000, looked at what that might be in Bremerton as a comparable, and a comparable wage in Bremerton was 90. And I looked at also Mount Vernon, and comparable salary in Mount Vernon actually came up to $97,000. So those are just a couple that I pulled to look at, to show that we were behind the curve in our wages. And I think that's all that.
And so this ordinance, Kerry, correct me if I'm wrong, puts the mayor's salary right like in the middle between Mount Vernon and Bremerton?
Yes, correct. So we also looked at, so we looked at Bremerton, Mount Vernon, I averaged those two, so we look at the average and place it with the average. We also looked at East Wenatchee because it's so close, and so looking at that and pulling the average together, it's just shy of that amount of what's being proposed. Great.
Just shy of East Wenatchee?
Actually, it's above East Wenatchee, but when you average Bremerton, Mount Vernon, and East Wenatchee together.
We're a lot better at East Wenatchee.
Yes, yes, but we always kinda wanna look at it.
I know, you're gonna start fighting.
Yeah, we're a whole nother ballgame, I would say.
So do I hear a motion?
Your honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2019-01, ordinance of the city of Wenatchee, establishing compensation for the mayor, amending ordinance number 2007-38, codified at Wenatchee City Code 1.06.040, to the extent that it is inconsistent with this ordinance and providing for an effective date.
Second.
I hear a motion from Councilmember Kulaas, and second by Councilmember Poyer, to adopt ordinance number 2019-01 establishing compensation for the mayor, amending ordinance number 2007-38, codified at WCC 1.06.040, to the extent it is inconsistent with this ordinance and providing for an effective date.
Any discussion?
I just wanna make the comment, I talked to a couple of council members about this. I feel it's a pretty large jump to happen all at once. We obviously should be looking at this on a more regular basis instead of waiting so long. But I also have a little bit of concern about making this into a career position for somebody. I want a mayor who wants to be here for the betterment of Wenatchee, not for the paycheck and the benefits and everything else. I told Mayor Coon, so I think he's doing a great job and he works very hard for what we do pay him, and so I don't have a huge problem with it. It's more the principle of taking this to such a large level. It's a pretty big increase all at once, so that's my concern, and because of that, I am gonna vote no.
Okay. All in, any other discussion?
I guess the only thing I would say on it, I'm gonna go forward, but I think that we need to, you know, and I've said this before, we run into this fairly frequently with, you know, things that come up to make adjustments on, I remember, you know, the business license thing was, to me, is a classic example of that, you know? You leave it unchanged for years and years and years, and then we get this, and it looks huge. But in terms, I guess I'm okay with this. I'm not sure that that necessarily would encourage somebody to, you know, become mayor of the city of Wenatchee or any city. But I think that the city has grown substantially, not only in the last, you know, 12 years, but you go back, you know, the mayor was always a, you know, it was a part-time job, I mean, he kinda ran the store and once in a while he ran down to city hall and signed something and whatever, and that's not the job anymore, this is a full-time job. And I think that's a fair compensation to have, so, yeah, I agree with you, Keith, on one level, yeah, it looks big and whatever, but.
Well, don't remember, or don't forget that it wasn't too long ago that we actually had a sustainable committee formed, trying to figure out how we were gonna make ends meet, so. I'm just, again, I wanna take a conservative approach, and that's why I have a little bit of a problem.
And I respect that, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Get back up here and earn your paycheck.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, as far as it. Item D, authorization for the temporary lending of cash, Mr. Posenjak.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here presenting resolution 2019-03, authorizing the temporary lending of cash from the general fund. This is basically an administrative resolution that we do every year, and due to the nature of the operations of the city, we've got a couple funds that occasionally, their cash goes negative just because of the cycle of their business, and so the general fund is able to loan them funds to cover their temporary shortfalls. And so this resolution basically allows the general fund to loan that to help with their cash flow needs. So if you have any questions?
Brad, I guess the only question I have, just kinda from the previous thing we just passed, we do this every year, is there, do we have to do this every year, or is there some way that we can?
Do it, put it in the policy?
Put it in the policy, I mean.
You know, I will look into that, there probably is a way that we could just do that, put it in the policy and have the council authorize, just in general, that the general fund can loan to other funds. Where it really comes into is when you have, we have funds outside the general fund loaning to each other, then it's a little bit different story because there's more restrictions around those funds than there are with the general funds. So I think probably historically, we've just always done a resolution to cover the loans, 'cause I don't think the general fund has always been able to be the loaning fund, it's been the utility funds in the past, probably. And so we've probably just always done this resolution, so, but that is something that we could look at, putting, building into the financial policies that we're actually gonna be amending in a second.
Yeah, I would appreciate it, it just seems to me, it's just a, it's a policy thing. We all get the paycheck, you know, people don't pay their taxes, we don't get our money, so that's something that just happens all the time and consistently every year to year. It seemed to me we could handle that as an administrative thing, probably should put some, you know, probably a limit at some point in there, some things in there, but if you at least take a look at it, I'd appreciate that. With that said, I would make a motion for the approval of resolution 2019-03, approving the temporary lending of cash from the general fund to other funds, including but not and limited to the CDBG entitlement fund and the Police Station G, General Obligation Bond Fund, as needed in 2019.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to adopt resolution 2019-03, approving the temporary lending of cash from the general fund. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're up again.
Yes, now I'm presenting resolution 2019-4, for some revisions to the financial management policy. Just for context of this small policy revision, the city does have an overall budget that we adopt, and that covers all funds, both operating and capital projects that we have, and that's a requirement by the state law that we do that. The city also has its own rules that we adopt budgets for each capital project that we do, and that's a state policy, or, that's a, sorry, that's a city policy that we have in our financial management policy. And so for this, we, I've been working with Public Works over the last year because we've bounced into this policy a couple times, that whenever we, we've got these project budgets that are built, and then if there's small overruns on these project budgets, then they have to come to council to get these approved. And there's other methods, even when, even when the overall budget for that fund has already been approved, and they wouldn't really need to come to council otherwise except that our policy says so for project budgets. And oftentimes, when, if they're going over on their project budget, they're also going over on their contract and need a contract amendment, so this is just one more thing, one more kinda hoop to jump through and one more area where you can get tripped up if you don't remember to get your project budget approved by council. So right now, the way our policy currently stands is that if your project budget exceeds, if you're exceeding your project budget by more than 5%, then you have to go to council for approval. We ran into a couple instances this year where there were small, very small amounts that we ended up having to come to council for. For example, if you've got a $300,000 capital project, and you've, or the budget's already been approved at 300, and now it, you've gotta, now it ends up being $315,000 when the project's all sudden done, Public Works did still have to come to council to get an approval for that $15,000 overrun, even though they've already had council approval for their full fund budget, it's just specifically on this capital project budget. So this resolution would approve policies to increase that limit from 5% to 10%, just giving just a little bit more flexibility for that department while still allowing the council to be informed when there's major, major changes. So you have any questions?
I'd just like that you also put a dollar amount cap in there, the 10% or.
Yeah.
I think that makes it work.
Yep.
Yeah, 'cause for big projects, you guys wanna know, yeah, if we're going over budget.
So with that, I'll make a motion for approval of resolution number 2019-04, adopting updated financial management policies.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Harold, to adopt resolution 2019-04, adopting updated financial management policies. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. This is Brad's birthday week.
It's a whole week.
Twenty-nine. All right, Jeremy, Horse Lake Road, the gift that keeps on giving.
Yes, speaking of overruns.
Speaking of overruns. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm here to talk about the Horse Lake project. This project was originally set up with a budget of $577,000. The construction encountered some significant problems during the initial excavation. A lot of rock was found without any kind of binding material, there was very little rock underneath, road base underneath the asphalt. We had some significant cave-ins, we lost a good portion of Don Terrace Road at the very beginning of the project. Public Works Director came in and asked for a budget amendment back in October, and was granted that budget amendment to increase the project budget up to $715,500. We began paving shortly after that council meeting, when the contractor broomed and cleaned the roadway to the north, they discovered that all of the construction work, the activities, had basically annihilated the asphalt. The replacement of the asphalt and the rock in Horse Lake Road north of Don Terrace was extensive, resulting in a significant overage in the asphalt and the rock quantities. So I'm here to ask for the additional funds associated with the cost of reconstruction of the entire roadway, to the tune of $89,365, which would take the current project budget amount from $715,500 to $804,865. Yes, that's what I said when I figured out what was going to happen.
May I ask, refresh my memory, what else was being, utilities were being installed besides sanitary sewer?
It was only sewer, but the sewer is significantly.
We're not addressing stormwater?
No, there was no stormwater associated with it.
So there's no curb and gutter being?
No curb and gutter installation, no sidewalk, there was no sidewalk.
What a shame not to do it at the same time, right? What is that forecast for the life of this road surface not having?
I haven't done calculations in terms of its lifespan, but we've basically reconstructed the roadway, so theoretically, it's a 20-year roadway, if not longer.
But not being able to get the drainage off might adversely affect that?
That is actually a relatively small drainage basin, there are a couple of inlets, catch basins there, they're dry wells, they're not really catch basins, they're nothing to drain to, but most everything ends up going down Maiden Lane or Horse Lake Road. Because of the grades there, and the way that the roadway is actually set up, there's not a lot of water, relatively speaking, that gets down that corridor.
Yeah, it's just one of these ones that, yeah, I'm glad people are hooking up and using it, but this was a very expensive.
We have seen a lot of interest in people.
Sewer program with a road construction project, yeah.
No one anticipated, you know, the issues that it was gonna bring about.
Right.
Nobody could've known until you started digging.
Yeah.
Pretty much. We had to tie to what was existing. We ended up changing the design a little bit during the whole course of the project to shallow the sewer up so that it wouldn't cascade throughout the entire project, but the asphalt was not very well constructed and there was really no base course underneath it.
The neighbors should be happy that they're hooking up to the sewer system.
They really are very happy with the project still, you know, I know a couple people in there personally, and they really appreciated all the work that was done, so.
I got a lot of good feedback regarding the contractor on this project. It was painful, like any construction projects in a neighborhood are, but it went fairly well.
Everybody got through it.
Well, your honor, I'll make a motion for city council to amend the project budget by $89,365 to pay for the additional paving and roadway work, and further authorize the mayor to approve the construction change order.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Sparza, second by Councilmember Markhart, to amend the project budget by $89,365 to pay for additional paving and roadwork, and further authorize the mayor to approve construction change order. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Jammerman, iron adjustments. For the second time today, 'cause we did this at finance committee earlier today.
Good evening. The overview paragraph there in the staff report explains the need for this. So as you know, this was sort of our first year with the kickoff of the street preservation program, our street department, in preparation for the chip seal or the rest of the preservation program that will occur in 2019, they did over five miles of that skin patch that you see out and about throughout the city. They did a great job, obviously we got a lot of compliments on it. One of the things that was missed, though, or that we need to come back and continue on, is there's 166 manholes and water valves that have to be raised. So whenever we, whenever we add asphalt to the road, we have to raise those up, and given the volume of this work, this is really a much bigger project than just for our crews to take on, and so we are proposing to actually have that done as a small works roster contract and put that out for bid. The majority, the lion's share of these costs will be taken on by the utilities that, so as an example, the sewer and storm division, sewer division will pay for the, or fund the raising of the sewer manholes, the water division will fund the raising of the water valve cans, and then we have a little bit of general fund money for the monuments, they have to be raised, our survey monuments that are at the intersection, there was 15 of those. The PUD will be sharing in the costs of the water valve raising of their valves, and the reason there's a sharing cost this year is that we didn't give them notice prior to, and in working out and negotiating on that, we said, let's split the cost 50/50 this year, and then from here going forward, they'll be responsible for the costs of their water valves. So they'll be contributing, if the bids come in, as we see, they'll be contributing, I think, around about $10,000 to this cost, so. The breakdown there, you can see, was $46,000 from sewer, $46,000 estimated from storm, got about $19,000 from the water utility, PUD's at $9,600, and then you've got a general fund, which is actually right out of the 111th on the preservation of 96. So we wanna put this out, get those, get that iron adjusted this year, and then we'll be ready for the chip seal or those products later this year, which we'll be actually back here on the 17th talking to you about the preservation program.
All right, any questions for Rob? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Rob, just clarification, I guess, is that we're asking for $105,400 on the breakdown sheet there, but it listed at 141,250, is, are we, which one are we authorizing?
No, yeah, it's, I'm sorry if I misspoke, it's 141,250 is the engineer's estimate.
Okay.
And the budget sheet in your package should reflect that.
Okay.
Yeah.
There was an update that we got.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Sorry about that.
Sure on that, okay, good, thank you.
All right, any questions for Rob? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I move for city council to approve the project budget for the iron adjustments project.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Bailey, to approve the project budget for the iron adjustment project, that being $141,250. Discussion?
Well, I will say, today when this came up, I had a question, and I said, or I complimented how nice Western was, and my response was.
We haven't raised, it's because the manholes are paved over, so that's why, that's why I drive so smooth, so.
Nice and smooth, and then they go in and ruin it.
You gotta go cut it up.
Right, we could have the smoothest roads in Wenatchee if we covered all our utilities.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Rob. Historic Preservation Board reappointment, Glenn, or Stephen, or whoever's still around.
Good evening, Glenn Brees, we have two members, we're recommending reappointment, the board recommended reappointment, Wendy Priest and Darlene Baker, great members, and unanimous recommendation of, that you consider that reappointment.
Your honor, I make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2019-05, reappointing two voting representatives to the Wenatchee Historic Preservation Board for three-year terms, those being Wendy Priest and Darlene Baker.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kulaas, second by Councilmember Harold, to adopt resolution 2019-05, reappointing Wendy Priest and Darlene Baker to the Historic Preservation Board for three-year terms. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Planning Commission reappointment.
Yes, Susan Albert, recommendation from the Planning Commission to extend her term, she filled a partial term, and asking that she be allowed to serve a full term as recommended by the Planning Commission.
I'll make a motion for the city council to approve resolution number 2019-06, reappointing a member of the Planning Commission, Susan Albert.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to adopt resolution 2019-06, reappointing Susan Albert to the Planning Commission. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Pick one. Federal Building Architectural Services, Steve King.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a pretty straightforward one, this is a request to extend their contract for schematic design for a couple months, no budget change. ARC Architects worked with us this last year to do schematic design, which the renderings there you see are some of the outcomes. The other outcomes include the building analysis and structural reviews and so on and so forth. So they have a report in to us, and Aaron and Alyssa and I are reviewing those reports, I'm sure we'll have some update, or some edits. If I wanna pay them for their edits, I have to have their contract extended past the first of the year in order to pay them for the work, so that's, that's the request.
Your honor, I make a motion that the council authorize the mayor to sign amendment number one to the contract with ARC Architects, extending the completion date to March 1, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kulaas, second by Councilmember Harold, to authorize the mayor to sign amendment number one with ARC Architects, extending the completion date of their contract to March 1, 2019. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, what's your, what's your pleasure?
Whose turn is it?
Who hasn't, who hasn't done it yet?
Mike hasn't done it yet.
Mike and Lyle, you guys are on the same terms, and Keith is, Mike, but you did it, though.
I did it a year before.
Yeah. You were saying a couple of the coin for, between us two.
Is there a concern if they're running for office?
Mayor Pro Tem can't?
Yeah, he can.
They can. They just don't do any public radio addresses or whatever.
Yeah, they're just sort of running the meetings. They're doing the normal, there's the mayor when you're not. I mean, I think-
Lyle, can you-
That would mean you wouldn't be able to be mayor while you're running for mayor.
Can I ask, well, can I ask, are you gonna run?
What?
Are you gonna run for City Council?
Oh, I'm not, yes.
Linda, are you on?
Yes.
I won't run. If them two run, I won't run. So do you want to be Mayor Pro Tem?
I'll be Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2019-01, Resolution appointing Mike Poyer as Mayor Pro Tem for 2019.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to adopt Resolution 2019-01, appointing Mayor Pro Tem Mike Poyer for 2019. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council committees. Thoughts, ideas, changes?
From, from me, I've been on the Downtown Association Board, and the downtown is mostly in District Four and a little bit in District One, and I felt it was probably more appropriate for either District Four or one of the at-large positions to do that, or District One. Just, you know, if we're going to develop our district responsibilities, it's just something that I, you know, I've enjoyed it, but I just think it's, if it's in your district or at large, it might be more appropriate.
I went to, I went to a meeting, so I'll take that. I went to a couple days ago. I'll take it.
And you're in District Four, aren't you?
Yeah, I think so.
That makes sense.
All right, so Mike Poyer is going to do the WDA, and Mark Kulas is gonna go off of the WDA.
Does anybody want Community Action Council? That's a-
Get them all stabilized.
Now it's second Wednesday, second Wednesday is what it is.
Second Wednesday at noon. What do they do?
Well-
From your perspective.
Lot of weatherization grants.
Well, I mean, the meetings.
Oh, the meetings. I get a lunch. They've had a lot of personnel situations there.
It is pretty stable now, isn't it?
It's going through some processes, yeah. Stabler, after you helped me out a couple times, yeah.
Stabler like Ken Stabler?
Yeah.
Stable as the train is no longer going over the cliff.
I think we're still being recorded, so I don't need to say. No, I don't know. If nobody will take it, I'll take it. I'll stay on it.
I'll continue to be an alternate.
Okay.
Any ideas on Finance Committee, Public Safety Committee, or Public Works Committees? I know I like to get the Finance one switched around, but it seems to, we've got a kind of a good working order. Anyone want to switch any of those around?
I've been on Finance two years, so does anybody. If it works in your schedule, great. If it doesn't, that's fine.
I have no problem leaving them the way they are. I just always want to offer people to the Finance that sort of want it. But it seems like we've got a pretty little rhythm going. I don't know if any of you guys want to do it or not.
I'd love to be back on it, but my schedule just doesn't allow that.
Jim, you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
Leave it as is, then?
And I, yeah, I think so. We have an alternative transportation council, which I think is important.
TPA and LTAC, staying the same?
What's that?
TPA and LTAC, staying the same?
Yep, TPA is Ruth.
Yep.
LTAC is Mark.
Yep.
Chamber of Commerce is-
I think Mike's been doing TPA as well. Yes.
Okay.
So do we end up with three council members there?
No.
Two.
Two?
I showed up as a guest once and had to leave.
I think I need to start going to those monthly to give reports, so that's why I ask.
All right.
Okay.
Nothing else for me in that. I guess I would, at some point, and again, we've sort of talked about this a number of years ago, the Public Facility District, at some point, I might ask to be removed, at which point we-
Find a citizen representative.
A citizen representative. We may go through a process to do that.
I think when you're ready to relinquish that, you know, we can chat about how we recruit that.
Okay.
And the skills that we're wishing to be represented.
So you've got the stuff for that and we'll adopt it at the next meeting?
Perfect. Okay.
I did have one comment.
Yes.
That on the Winachi Stormwater Advisory Committee, you put down as an alternate. I have been going to those meetings.
Actually, if you want, you could take over that. I'd be an-
I'm the Rivercom Representative Alternate. I'd like to take it over.
You want to be full-time Rivercom?
Yeah. If you don't want it.
No, I still want it. Actually, I enjoy it.
Okay, then you should keep it, but I'd like to continue as the alternate.
Okay.
So where's the stormwater one? I can't even find it on here.
It's at the bottom.
Nah, it's from the bottom.
We're at the bottom.
Oh, there it is. So Keith is the-
I mean, they don't meet very often. It's-
Yeah.
Once or twice a year.
So Lyle, should we make you the alternate, just in case?
Or if you want to make him-
No, maybe permanent, and then Keith alternate.
Perfect. Okay, got it.
I think we've all passed that one around.
All right, so you have something for us to adopt at the next meeting, Tammy? Thank you. I will mention just a couple of things as we're sort of working our way out. The Finance Committee had quite a discussion today, and you'll get to hear some more of it in two weeks. We've got sort of three new employee requests from the time we adopted the budget last November. We, and I'll get this backwards. We did a halftime cemetery, halftime parks maintenance, but the budget only had half of one of them in it, not the other. So there's the request for the other half.
Was it intended to be both halves?
I think it was.
It just didn't get rid of?
Just didn't quite get it put in the right way. With respect to the community center, as you recall, we did not accept the one-year extension with Community Action. They then sent us their 120-day letter and said, we're out. So on May 1st, the community center is coming back to the city of Winachi. For those of you that remember the last time we had it, we had a full-time employee down there, Dave Gerlock, who sort of ran the building full-time. So this is going back to the Parks Department. Mr. Erickson, he is requesting, he's always been asking for one more employee, and we've been telling him no since 2012. So he wants this full-time employee half to do this and half to sort of run the pool. So since the community center got handed to us post-budget, and then as we looked at economic development, and I think this is where most of the discussion was today, you know, the list of things that we're asking Steve King to do, including NEPA and all the sorts of stuff, really requires probably an extra body. So those are all discussed today. The Finance Committee recommended approval, but because there are three new bodies, we're gonna bring it to the full council for their discussion at the next meeting and a budget amendment. There was lots of discussion, both pros and cons, and a little bit of what Keith was talking about, this, you know, how big are we going? And this is clearly gonna come out probably out of our savings account because we're sort of full on the reoccurring stuff. And so we, a lot of times, we'll approve new carpet in three minutes, and we were an hour just talking about the employees. So this really is gonna come to you at our next meeting for full approval before the staff goes out and hires folks. With respect to Matt Howe Park, I, Confluence Health gave another $100,000. We are fairly certain that Chalane County Commissioners on Monday will be approving $250,000 of the 9.009 money. We've been told to go and that they're gonna approve $250,000. So we're excited about that. Still working with the PUD on some final numbers for them, and I think we're getting really, really close. So that's a pretty good little stretch for us. We had a good Friday, or whatever day it was, a couple, three weeks ago, when we got both of the words that those were probably gonna happen.
That's good news.
Yeah. And so, again, they're trying to get bid documents ready to go and design. Hopefully, we'll get to construction sometime. We're still a little bit short. Hopefully, the PUD sort of gets us to the finish line, and we should be hopefully under construction by May or June, I'm hoping. So it's nice that the county commissioners, they have a whole bunch of that economic development money that they have not spent. Some estimates, $7 million of it. I don't know if that's true or not, but so we're gonna work with them on trying to figure out how to spend some of that. Council members? I would expect our work sessions, so last year, you remember, we did the one work session where everyone came in and talked about their work plans for the year, and I got yelled at because we just couldn't get it done in one. So you're gonna get one or two, a work session for the next five. Okay? So you're just gonna kind of work our way through it. I would expect some longer meetings for the first three or four months of the year as we start working our way through a number of those sorts of issues.
We've had so much request for time for the first three months of the year, so, yeah.
It doesn't, our request for time.
Yes. Council members, anything for the good of the order?
Well, looking forward to the next Museum Board meeting.
Yes, and I will be there.
You'll be there. Mayor Lacy will be there, and Eva McCauley, and Kenny Sturgeon. It's gonna be a very interesting meeting.
Yes.
Hopefully we'll-
So we have, I met with Kenny. We actually went to the Colville Confederated Tribes together three, four weeks ago. She's wonderful. And, again, they're just trying to get this Wells House thing sort of figured out. And we're just, so we're gonna sit in a room and try to figure it out.
Daryl Dickerson brought Kenny to my office to meet me, and then I actually asked her to come in and speak at my Lions Club.
Okay.
She is going to, she's brilliant. She's gonna be great. We are really lucky to get her.
Yeah. No, real excited for that. But we gotta get that sort of finished up somehow.
Since we're broaching that, that subject with, with the tribes, you know, something that's been rattling around with me for, ever since I've been on the council, and I've expressed this a couple of times, and I've talked to Dave Erickson about it, I've talked to a couple of our former museum directors about it. Memorial Park isn't just a war memorial, it's a memorial to our community. And it seems to me that one of the things that we, that we're missing in that park is commemoration of our Native American heritage. Well, while our name is Winachi, and we still have Winachi and Chalane and Yakima streets and whatnot, I think we really need to be taking a look in our arts and cultural and recreation funds and whatnot, and working with both the Yakima Nation and the Colville Confederated Tribes, or something that would be suitably commemorative of our Native American heritage in this community, which is very rich, and it predates us.
All of us.
And, you know, Dave's, Dave's had some great ideas about things like design competitions and whatnot, and we couldn't do it without the tribes. And I'm just kind of wondering at what point is it-
So here's what I would suggest-
Time to begin to talk to them.
So when we got in this car, and I don't, I met Randy Lewis one time before. I don't know if you know Randy, but he's a Colville remarkable. And every place we went, it was his brother or his sister. And then every piece of artwork between here and Omac was his brother's artwork all over, up on the terrace. And, I mean, there's some, some really valuable sort of folks-
I had an opportunity to broach the subject with the Tribal Council Chairman, Mike Nershon. He is a Husky, and he's also an Eagle.
Okay, good.
His advanced degrees are from the U-Dub and his background. But he didn't have much time to, in our meeting, didn't have much time. But it's just-
I think they would be thrilled if we approached them about.
The council adopted the budget this afternoon, threw $15,000 of work through the museum to work on some of the research with Randy Lewis, Bill Lehman, and tries to understand the Winachi esposa, which is not Colville, it's not Yakima, it's Winachi band.
Right.
And so we're, we're meeting with Kenny tomorrow to talk about that work. So that's a good starting, starting to understand the corporate conditions here, the history here. It's pretty fascinating.
It's, and it's absent in our, in our community and our culture, other than the names that we've put on, on things. And I'm thinking of something more visually prominent in Memorial Park, which is the center, has historically been the center of our community.
Yeah.
And you will, if, if we ever build Confluence, you will see quite a lot of references and artwork and images of the Winachi tribe. That's what we're working with, with the Colvilles about currently. But I agree with you. I think something in Memorial Park as well is-
Something for the Winachi band that would be appropriate and educational and culturally stimulating.
I think it'll be wonderful to learn from them what places they treasure.
Yeah.
No, that's part of the process we're embarking on.
All right.
Yeah, just one quick thing on the, the library remodel thing with the fundraising. Just basically there, the 1.5 million has been raised, or about 30,000 short. But it's, there's some things still to come in and whatever. So if, that has been kind of starting to wind down and then basically pulling the trigger on getting construction. So probably by May-
So which reminds me, Rob.
That's gonna fly.
Nice. We need to talk to Aaron, or at least, there was issues with air conditioning units and boilers, and they had to get removed, and we were supposed to pay for it or split it, and it was $500,000 or something, and I don't exactly know where that went.
I, the last time I talked to Aaron, I don't know that they had gotten back to us.
Okay.
So I think we-
Yeah, I don't know what the total is. There's a, there's a, apparently it's March, I think. There was a state grant.
Okay.
Of something, about a $300,000 state grant for that HVAC system. I don't think that pays for the whole thing, but it covers a significant portion of it.
I missed, sort of, you brought that up, and I remember a conversation where they were looking for a check from us, and so I was just-
Yeah, I think after that-
Just a follow-up would be good.
Aaron went back and they went through the energy efficiency process, and so they've gone through a couple of processes, and we're just waiting to hear back.
I just never understood how, because they couldn't use any of their savings, that they got stashed away there.
Different library district versus the library that's a city-owned library. It's a different, different model. But they do have a lot of money in it. The library district has committed a half million dollars or more.
Under new leadership and new, new folks, they've, they've kicked a lot of dollars into that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Welcome back. Tammy, are we off?